Good morning, and the meeting has officially started for the special meeting of the Real Estate Appraisal Commission for April 6, 2022. Commissioner Rasmussen, can you hear me at this time?
Think we might have lost him in his travels.
Sure, I'm just checking if, yes, we actually did. I will reach out to Commissioner Rasmussen in the background if no one minds, and be right back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, can we start without him?
I think we can.
Yeah, that's up to you guys. I'll reach out to Commissioner Rasmussen and Commissioner Barron in the background, but I'll leave the rest up to you guys.
Okay.
Why don't you give Jerry a few minutes to get in, because if it's just, who is it, just me? Am I the only commissioner or Norris?
No.
So is also here.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, go ahead and do it. I just, well, let me say this, hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look at the table of contents, because I think we'll, you know, kind of work from that, and, you know, have some input from everyone, but I don't mind waiting, I just don't want to not be respectful of everybody's time, who has taken the time to join us.
Commissioner Rasmussen will be joining us in a second.
Yay.
I'm dialing him back into the meeting at this time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Vicky, it's Jackie. I'm not sure if I got the table of contents or not, and maybe it just went to the commission members.
Um, what I can do, as soon as Jerry Joe comes back on, I can have her send it to you. Terry Joe, can you send a table of contents to Jackie?
Okay.
Or maybe John could forward it to me?
I can't, I don't have email, Jackie, I apologize, I can't even pull it up, I'm working off my phone.
Oh, okay, so we'll have, we'll also have Terry Joe bring it up.
Okay, and the table of contents, did you send that to me for this meeting?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That was sent to the members, that was sent to the members the day of the last appraisal meeting, but you can send it up again, I sent it to you separate, I said, here's the attachment for.
Okay, from our last meeting, okay, but not for this meeting specifically, okay, all right, one second.
Yeah, you sent it out on March 9th. If that helps ya.
Yep, during the last meeting, okay, I understand, so would you like me to send it, the 2022 Suggested CE Appraisal Course topic? So I'm going to forward that to the commission again at this time, and I'll also put it in the meeting files and put it up on screen for everyone.
And just like, one make sure that Jackie can do it.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Jackie?
Could you just forward that to me, too, when you shout to everybody? Because I won't see it being, yeah.
Yep, already sent, Jackie.
I was just on a Microsoft Teams meeting the other day, and it worked, it's just weird, I don't understand.
It's not working for me.
Okay, sorry. This is Zoom, isn't it? Is this Zoom or Teams?
Teams.
Teams, okay.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Rasmussen is on with us at this time. Commissioner Rasmussen, could you let me know if you're able to respond to us at this time?
Can you hear me?
I can, thank you, Jerry.
Very good.
Okay, I will be reaching out to Commissioner Barron in the background, but I will turn the meeting over to the commission members, thank you.
Can you put up this, can you put up the table of contents on the screen? For those who don't have access.
Yes, I'm getting that at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, baby. How are you? You're all wet, yeah? You're all wet.
Should be all set now, can everyone see? The table of contents?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm driving, so I'll be listening.
Okay, Jerry, do you want someone else to run the meeting?
Yeah, please do. I thought this was, uh, Vicky was running this, right?
Uh, well, I mean, it's a collapse of effort, but we can get started, if you want me to start, you know, I think the commission members should, I think the commission members are supposed to run it, I'll say John Galvin.
All right, then, I'll start us, uh, this is a special meeting, beginning at eight, 9:15 on April, what is the, 6th?
Mm-hmm. 6th.
Uh, 26, 2022, and we thank you, and for the agenda here, we are talking about the law class. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Okay, Vicky, I'll turn this over to start here, what we, what areas you want to cover.
Okay, so I think that the table of contents that's now on the screen are, have been sent to individuals, really was just a, again, a starting place for us to try to assemble, or to think about what topics should be included in our upcoming course, you know, for 22, 24, and for the most part, there are some things that have to remain, just because it's a part of what the statutory requirements are for the department, as well as the duties of the appraisal commission, so I would say the first, maybe five sections, maybe six sections, I have to say, so the room for change, or the room for opportunity for new suggestions, will come somewhere around section 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, so that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, so we have at least seven areas which we could change, move around, get rid of, delete, or any other suggestions that anyone has, and I'm willing to listen, I'm here for that purpose, so anyone who wants to make a suggestion, have some input, that's fine, please do so at this time.
Well, it's hard to make suggestions, I'm going to, this is John, that, on this, it's hard to just make suggestions without actually just start writing it, and the, there's just so much that goes on about supervisor, and there's other sections that really drag on, that can be just minimized into a few slides, I don't think the topic itself.
Can you give us some suggestions?
Yeah, I don't think the topic, I don't, I can't pull anything up to explain anything, because I'm just on my phone, unfortunately, the, the topics that we cover, I think are fine, so I think the starting point might be, just to make an outline of the topics that are covered, and then go over those topics, and then from there, break it down and figure out how are we going to make slides for those topics, one slide, two slides, three slides, I'm just throwing this out as a suggestion.
Okay, can anybody tell me offhand, I don't know, I mean, how many, I don't know, is there a certain amount of slides that generally would work well for a three-hour course? I don't know, I mean, you know, is it one slide, a half a minute, or, I mean, I know it depends on the topic, I get that, but.
Um.
Vicky, it's Jackie, I, I think that, you know, John fortunately taught the class, and Linda's taught it, that several of the slides have duplicate information on it, you know, and I think that if it, if it has a fine scrub, you kind of have to have it in front of you, print it out, and actually go through and make those changes, I know, John, correct, you noticed when you were teaching it, that, you know, every couple of slides, it kind of reverted back to old information that you had discussed, and after listening to this multiple times, there are some case studies or quote examples, and they're all residential based, I, and it seems that, you know, a lot of the people seem to be, I don't want to say annoyed, but just, I'm not sure if the case studies that are there are necessary, I know you're trying to get across the point of, you know, potential issues that you've seen on a commission level, but maybe those can be modified in some way, or give examples in a different format, so that you have the commercial appraiser who feels that they're actually, you know, getting something out of it, and I know that there was quite a bit.
Okay.
Yep, and there was quite a bit on UsePAP, and UsePAP is a required course for everyone to take, so again, I'm not sure, because I don't sit on the commission, when you're reviewing things, if you see that there's UsePAP issues, but maybe, you know, someone can help you identify what issues you're actually seeing when cases are filed against someone, or when folks are, you know, submitting for their, their hours, for their work experience, to maybe make it based on those, and not just, and I don't want to say fill and fluff for information, but if there's something in there that, you know, slides that were there just to be, you know, informative, I would try to more focus on actual issues that the commission is experiencing, that's my, my suggestion.
Those are, they're very helpful, thank you.
And I know several folks ask, and I realize that, you know, if you create it now, you know, in two years, you know, changes will happen, but a lot of times, I hear individuals ask, how many current, you know, appraisers are there in the state, how many residential, how many commercial, how many, you know, provisionals, so I think if there's a chart, or even a graph of, you know, or current numbers, with, you know, as of renewals, as of April 30th, 2022, this is, this is our current number.
Right, there is one in this, there is one on the current law course, that was effective as of September of 2021, so yeah, we do, I will update that as of May.
It lists on the appraisers.
What?
I, sorry, I, I guess I missed that, okay, because I know that they asked that several times, so that, that would probably be, that would be beneficial.
Okay, maybe we should put it right near the beginning.
That's fair, we're taking those.
While they're still paying attention.
Right? And I think one of the other things that I found, we did have a Freedom of Information request for the statistics, the cumulative statistics of, you know, pass fail rates from 2010 to 2021, so we have that type of information, which is new information that we didn't have previously, that might be something of interest, you know, to the, I'll say public, if you will, to those that are taking the course, and, and, you know, one of the things that we've come to realize is that, you know, statistically, the pass fail rate is, is, you know, is kind of high, so, you know, maybe there's some things that could be gleaned from the data that we have, you know, for, you know, future courses, or whatever, or help, or whatever, but we do have some new statistics that we are keeping, and as a result, that statistical information can be provided, because again, I do understand that the public wants to know, or the people that are taking the course, you know, want to know what's going on in the state of Connecticut, in Connecticut, what is our, you know, what's our trend, what's, you know, what's a issue or at issue for Connecticut appraisers, so that's something that the department can include more.
You know, this is John, I think one top, can you guys hear me okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, I, I. I think one topic, or one theme, this is just a suggestion, okay, is to, that, I think we need to pound home kind of more ethics in it, and I think the other thing we need to do, suggestion would be, we need a section, I think, that covers more of the regulations part of it, and, and explain a little bit better in the difference between what is the law and what are the regulations, and, and, you know, just to make those clearer, because people seem to get confused.
Okay, that's fair. Ethics is a good topic, that's never, a topic that we should, you know, get away from, so ethics is fine, that's fine, that's a great topic, or a theme, if you will, and the section on the law versus regulation, that's also something that can be addressed, or included.
Yeah, so we have update on statutes and regulations, so I think if we, you know, we go from Connecticut client statistics into update on statutes and regulations, I think if we broke it down in before that, and say, okay, what are the statutes, what are the regulations, that they're different, and then, and then just kind of cover, because it's, you know, the idea here is to pound home what, not, not just what they already know, because there's new people in the class, there's people who don't get it until they take 10 classes, you know, that kind of thing, so I think, you know, just on some of the regulations, and I think we need to also mention, somebody said something to me at a thing recently that I went to last week, that was disturbing, and I didn't respond, because it was just a, it's that they, they, they thought that on the evaluations, that an appraiser didn't have to do them, and on, on the OCC guidelines, that's what they, the regulatory guideline, they say that they don't, but in Connecticut, you have to be a certified appraiser, I mean, appraiser, and I think, a licensed, and I think we need to pound that, pound that home, I also think the other thing we need to clear up is using the term license versus certification, you know, we got away from using license because we had, we, if I got this correct, we banned the, the license category, but, you know, I keep asking people, are you licensed, are you licensed, are you licensed, and I, and there seems to be some confusion on that terminology.
Okay, so maybe an explanation, and what the requirements are, differences, okay, that's fine, I'm writing it down, thank you.
You're certified, but you hold a state license, to, you know, a license is what the state issues.
On our paperwork? I think.
The slide on that, I think, would just.
That's useful, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I think the other thing we did is we tried to expand the supervisor thing, because we're, none of us are happy with what we're seeing, and I think we kind of, we kind of have a lot of slides in there that touch that subject, because it's not an easy thing to talk about, and I think we can consolidate some of those slides, but I think we made, whatever we consolidated into, we need to, need to make, I think it's kind of have a stronger punch.
All right, you just have to decide if you want enough content so that the ASC will accept this course for what's required for a supervisor, or a new provisional, or you just want to touch on what we, as a commission, expect of them, and then they can take the supervisor trainee course that is out there, offered by a couple of different schools.
Right.
No, 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 can you, can you, can I be heard?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We designed this damn thing 25 years ago, so we would be flexible, so we would not have, the people have to take another course, this was specifically designed, so thinking ahead, that when this law thing came through, we had the vehicle already in place, we have the vehicle here, we're very fortunate, foresight, I'm glad that this is, we don't want to have the people take another class, because therefore, we won't get hardly anybody to step in to be a sponsor, or a supervisor, so if we give one more impediment to it, we, we go backwards in our view, so doggone it, we have the three hours, we have enough in there, so it satisfies this, we do not have to read every damn syllable to the resonance, they can let their eyes do the walking, and through that, but then, as John, you're saying, and Jackie, point out the highlights, okay? I, you know, I, I know I'm talking a little strong and salty here, my apologies, but this is what we're here for, and we set this up years ago, I know I'm the last of the Mohegans, so we didn't know what was coming down at us, we would have this vehicle, so let's use the vehicle, let's not add on another class, that's my thoughts on it.
Jerry, I agree, because we're complaining about.
We have a problem that we aren't addressing, there's a whole new method of becoming a certified appraiser that the Appraisal Foundation has set up, are we ignoring that completely?
Not at all.
Because that's a whole different ballgame, and it doesn't have a supervisor in it.
Yeah, but we can just put those in there, we, we have the vehicle to cover that, we put an X amount of slides, and you cover it.
No, Linda.
No, you can be four hours, no way.
When we put it in there, it was a four-hour class.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to keep, this is John, I don't think we need to keep it a four-hour class, I think we can accommodate, after teaching it, I think we can accommodate everything in three hours, I think we can meet the, I think we can talk about the new, is it TAP, I keep thinking TAP, is it TAP, the new program?
The power, the para?
Para.
Para, para.
We haven't, the state, right, and the state has not accepted that, we haven't changed our legislation to approve that yet, so, or what our requirements will be, so we can just mention that it's out there, but it's not a way to become an appraiser in Connecticut as of now.
Okay, but we have time to figure that out, and we may actually figure that, it out over the next several months, so we can adopt it, but I think what Jerry's saying is.
And then we can change the slides that need to be changed.
I think we should talk about para, that it's there, but I think this course should meet whatever the supervisory requirements are, because no, there's no way anybody's going to want to take a second class, they're just not going to do it.
All right, I just wanted to make sure where, you guys were all on the same page, so when we go to do this, we're going to include, you know, the slides that are necessary, the information that is necessary to satisfy the ASC.
John, having taught this class about 5,000 times, um, what I noticed when we went to the four-hour class, and include supervisor and provisional information in it, is that so many appraisers are not interested in that at all, and they literally turn off, and you lose them for that 20 minutes or so that you're talking about that, and it's hard to get them back again, so if you're going to do this, make it the very last topic, because they're going to shut down, the people who aren't interested in it are shutting down anyway.
All right, so along those guidelines, do we know what the requirements are that we have to talk about in our, in our law module to meet the, the feds' requirements? Do we have, is there some sort of criteria that they put out to say, hey, you have to talk about this, 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 and this?
There isn't, like, a set thing, I mean, we just took it basically from the AQB criteria from a, for a supervisor, and a trainee, what's expected of them, so that's where those slides came from, so if you guys can, you know, take a look at those slides, and you guys have all been supervisors, which is a great help, and, you know, let us know what's the most important things to emphasize in them.
All right, we can do that, but on, on a side note.
And there's some edits that, I mean, there's some edits to.
Yeah, like you said, there's a lot of duplicate, and if we put out a lot of the UsePAP stuff, and a couple of the other things that are not necessary, we can, you know, pare it down to the three hours without a problem, I'm hoping.
We will.
And still include everything, so, you know, as long as we know that you want the supervisor trainee stuff in there, then, you know, we'll make sure we have what's necessary to be satisfied the feds.
Has anybody looked at the Perea stuff to decide that, that maybe we do want to go with it?
I'm all for Perea, I think it's a great option, I know it's got to get fine-tuned, I know there's going to be probably schools out there that are going to start slacking, but we don't have any control over that, that's, that's.
Well, the problem, though, is that it has to, the classes have to be offered by the school, so we have to, if we're going to go with that, we have to get the schools up to speed, it can't be that I, I can go out and teach that course, you have to, it has to be taught from a school according to the Appraisal Foundation, and exist.
Right, and it'll be up to the schools to apply to the Appraisal Foundation to make that determination, and I would imagine there'll be the schools that, maybe McKissick, maybe the Appraisal Institute, there may be a couple appraisal management companies that decide they're going to run a program, by what I'm seeing out there, they're looking into it possibly, and, you know, having supervisors, and then, you know, a combination, so, you know, you guys have to decide, as far as that, as far as, are you going to accept 100% of the experience through that, or do you want them to actually go out and look at properties in Connecticut for a part of it, and actually write reports on a real property? You know, because that's, you know, it looks like states are doing a combination.
Well, the only thing that bothers me about this whole system is that you're using this mentor, so you don't have the, the supervisor ability, so if we switch to that, this whole thing about supervisory provisional is.
Well, there'll still be some of those, I mean, we're not saying you can only do Perea.
I don't, I don't know, I don't know that you can do two totally different ways to do something, because one of them takes almost six years, and the Perea one is supposed to be much shorter, so why would you opt for the?
I mean, there are appraisers who are getting, applying for their license in two years, depending on, you know, their supervisor, and how ambitious they are.
You know, that, I mean, like my group, we got everybody through in two years, because we had so much volume, we could get all the stuff in, but normally, you, the way that it's taught now, where you've got an appraiser acting as the supervisor, and they're giving work to someone else, they can't give them all the work, they have to, you know, balance it out, so it takes much longer, so in that respect, the Perea game plan.
But there may be, there may be appraisers who don't want to do it that way.
They should have the option.
Right.
We got it evolved, instead of just one way, we're giving them a second path.
Right.
And if they want to, if they want to go down that road, God bless them, if they want to go down, I'll call it the traditional route, God bless them, they have, at least we've given them another option.
Right, but that's really a discussion for another day, that, you know, we can mention what it is in the course, but until we've actually are doing it, then I don't think we need to have, you know, a ton of slides on it, until we go through the legislative process to, to allow it.
I have a, I just have a question when.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I, so I, I just want to, I, I, maybe for a point of clarification, just because I've never been involved in this process before, is it the commission that will have the final say on this material, or, Vicky, does it have to be gone through other departments, or, you know, any other divisions of the state, how, how is the process of approving this course?
The department, the department puts the slides together, the commission will approve it.
And that's as far as it goes, just the commission, correct? It doesn't have to go for any other, any other approval, and any other?
No, no.
That, so, so, so theoretically, the licenses expire April 30th, so if someone, so the new cycle starts May 1st, so typically, say there's someone who wants to get their provisional, their trainee, they have to take this course, when does this new one need to be available, or how, when can this existing one be replaced, or can it stay on for an interim, do you know what I'm saying, like, when, you know, say June 1st, can somebody take this old one if they need it?
Yes, yeah, we will leave this one available until the new one replaces it.
So, and then theoretically, during the two-year cycle, if Perea does come into play, the commission does approve it, and things change, can this law module be updated so that there's a version one and a version two that the commission would accept during the two-year CE cycle?
Yeah, we'll do the same as we did when we went from the three, three hour to the four hour, can only take one of them, you're not going to be able to take both of them for credit.
Okay, so, so at this point, because Perea isn't, you know, the commission hasn't approved it yet, is it something that, you know, that just kind of gets put to the side, and we just focus right now on the existing requirements that the state is accepting, and Perea is, you know, this update, this law module could theoretically be updated, when or if the commission approves it, then we make those changes, so we, we only touch base on, is that, am I?
Yeah, I mean, I would suggest, you know, I would suggest we. Yeah, I mean, I would suggest, you know, I would suggest we, you know, mention it and discuss Perea as a upcoming option, but that it's not in effect yet.
Right, okay, so that was just my thought process, that there could be more than, you know, 2022, 2023 or four, whatever you wanna call it, dot one and dot two for schools, so that if you do need to make, you know, changes based on what the commission approves and regs get approved, changes, that sort of thing, it could be revised and folks could take a new one, um, and they would be able to, to do that. So you would not really need putting all these slides in. And, you know, Linda, I know that you, you've taught this multiple times and the, you know, the trainee, uh, you know, it's important, but as Jerry had said, in my opinion, you don't have to read every single item. You know, you can highlight the information and everybody gets a handout of it and you hit home on the, on the major, you know, on the, on the topics.
I watch.
But if, if you need to meet the certain requirement, you know, you don't necessarily have to take the slides out, but I think that they can be modified a little bit because there are some duplicate slides. And, and I think that that's where you start to lose people, is that they keep hearing the same thing during that 20 minute time period. Just my, my comment.
It hasn't changed a year, so they're sitting down, listening every other year to the same information they've had. I, I mean, things don't change that fast in the law, so it's not like we're giving them anything new.
I think one of the-
The only thing that was, was the, you know, the provisional and whatever. But it was obvious that after adding that in, that extra hour was a killer.
I would think one of the things that was suggested was somebody had, um, said that there'd be more interactive-
Right.
Um, possibilities, and the other thing was to have more handouts, because if you have the handouts with the resources on it, you don't necessarily have to go as in-depth, you know, uh, with the presentations or the slides. So we will incorporate more handouts or, you know, as part, well, we would suggest that, you know, the handouts be incorporated as part of the course as well, and more interactive.
Right.
Opportunity.
I think, I think that's good. I, I, I also know that half of the people there won't look at the handouts, but that's okay.
That's okay.
Gave it to them.
They'll have to take them.
They end up on the, at the board because they screwed up something.
Yeah.
Well, the handouts are needed for resources, additional resources, so, I mean-
I know, I know, but what I'm saying to you is, most of these appraisers, because they just think that this course is something they've taken over and over and over again, they're, when they leave, they're not looking for anything new to learn about. They really aren't. So some of them will read whatever you hand, whatever the handouts are, and others of them, half of them will, not half, but maybe a third of them will actually leave the paperwork on the desk as they leave.
Okay. Duly noted.
Yeah, so, you know, I think-
I wanna say about the interaction thing is, if, if we do any type of inter- interac- interactivity, whatever you want to use the word, uh, you know, you always have a handful of people that start talking with their ego first as opposed to, and it, it can get, it can really suck up some time and it can get controversial too, so, or it opens the door for that possibility. Uh, I mean, a good discussion is great, but, um, and I guess it, it's up to the moderator to, uh, so maybe that might be something that-
Well, you can have a timer put, you can have a timer put into the-
Yeah, or maybe we include it as an option too for the instructor, because some instructors may be good at that. Other instructors may not be that good.
Okay, that's fair.
Yeah, I mean, you, and you probably need to, you know, read the class that you have in front of you at the same time.
Do, do we approve instructors? Linda, do we- Do we approve instructors, or it's just the school gets it and they put whoever they want on it to teach it?
In the past, in the last class, we made them send the resumes of all the instructors of this course.
Yeah.
And this is the only course that we asked for the resumes of the instructors.
Okay.
Because we wanted somebody who knew at least a little bit about either teaching a law course somewhere or knew Connecticut law.
Okay.
Let me ask you this, Linda, following up on your question there, which is a good one. What precludes us as the commission for approving the instructor to teach our class?
Um, I have to look at the regs to see if it specifically says we do not, or if it doesn't mention it, then we can. So let me take a look at the regs and I will let you know next Wednesday.
Yeah, you know, an option-
Yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, Jerry.
Uh, Linda, I think that's where you're going, because you and I've had that discussion, Linda Setso, a time or two or five, that, you know, we get instructors who don't know their elbow from their big toe.
Exactly.
And what we're talking about, and I firmly believe that many of the issues that come before us are because they're taking the class or were, were informed of the class, and how many times do we look up? You've taken the UCP, or excuse me, the Connecticut Law Class, three times, four times, eight times. Oh, I've never heard this, you know? Well, where are you taking it from? And I really think we can hold the, you know, people to the feet to the ground a little bit here. Now, that being said, Jackie, you are, you're representing a school. With how much of an impediment, or is this something we're barking up the wrong tree on? Is it difficult to find instructors and so forth?
I, I mean, I, for the law module, I wouldn't ask someone to teach a class if I didn't think they could teach it personally. I mean, we have the instructors that do the, the, the presenters for the law module. Some of them are approved appraisal institute instructors and others are, you know, John taught for sitting on the commission and Stephen Herbert has taught it for us multiple times. I personally, you know, again, wouldn't ask someone just willy nilly to, you know, say, oh, do you want to teach the law module for us? So, I mean, I don't have a problem with what you're asking us to do, you know, getting, you know, information, but again, I, me personally, for the appraisal institute, I would not ask someone to teach it if I didn't think that they were capable of teaching it.
Right, yeah, but you're really on top of that stuff. Not, the rest of the world isn't.
You know, another option, Mike, go, go ahead, Jackie.
You know, and Linda, you taught it, you know, for how many, you know, how many years, because, you know, sitting on the- As number one, you were approved appraisal institute instructor, AQB, and, you know, on the commission. And, you know, we had Bruce and Sean who, you know, teach for the appraisal institute, you know, and Sean, you know, being passed on the commission and Bruce being very involved, and then John just, you know, came in this cycle and, you know, Steve's done it multiple cycles and, um, for the life of me, I can't get Jerry, you know, to, to offer to do it for us here, even though I try every cycle, um.
I retired, I retired from that.
You and me both, Jerry.
But again, I would defer to, you know, and again, if you feel that there's a school that's not, I don't, I'm not sure if it's the instructor, it's just them presenting the material, you know, I, I think that, you know, and if, if you're going to make this more of an interactive and say, you know, John doesn't feel well with having to moderate that, and if he sees the content, then he should say, you know, Jackie, the way this material's been changed, I don't feel comfortable in having to do this, or if Steve says, you know, I don't really like this new format, you know, I'm gonna, you know, refrain from teaching in this cycle. So I think it's really up to the instructor to, to be able to say if they think that they're, you know, able to, to teach it.
You know, another option might be, uh, uh, around that is to, instead of, uh, to, to get us off the hook of having to say no to somebody, um, maybe we do it, and this is just an option though, that we actually have a, a class where we teach it to the instructors. I mean, us as commissioners, teach it to the instructors, and, which gives them the opportunity to go through and ask specific questions, you know. For instance, Steve may have a question because it may be something that has been asked several times that he just can't figure out. And, and just in a forum for just instructors, where they can ask questions and, and then, and then we, then they're qualified just by taking that class.
The realis-, the Real Estate Commission did that with their mandatory course this cycle, that they had our teach, teach the teacher course, and they had to take that before they were allowed to teach the class.
And we give them two hours for that, in addition to their two hours for the law module they're teaching. That way, they get credit for it. It's not something they have to do as a volunteer effort, you know.
Uh huh.
It's an option, just an option to think about.
Right.
I think that's good. Because you have people teaching it totally different ways. Uh, there should be a common voice going through this, so that everybody's getting the same information. And I know that Bruce and I don't teach anywhere near the same way. So there should be something where we're saying, this is what you need to include in this class. This is how you need to handle this type of question, so that everybody's getting the same material.
Linda, how is the real estate, uh, commission, not appraisal commission, how has, how is that accepted by the schools and the instructors, the teachers, the teacher?
They run that every year and it's packed.
Yeah, um, you know, they did it, they did it-
Different.
Right, they did it in the tw- two cy- not this current cycle, the cycle before for their Fair Housing, because it was, the course was written by Connecticut Fair Housing. It was the only way Connecticut Fair Housing would let them teach the course.
Right.
So it was fine, and they did it again this year with their mandatory course. And, um, which was, and it was done by, um, Connecticut Association of Realtors. So, um, it was, there wasn't any major issues that I'm aware of. And, you know, if they didn't have that and they had to say, um, who was teaching the course, they had to send in, um, a list of who, you know, for each school had to send in who would be teaching their course. If they weren't on the list, they couldn't teach the course.
Okay.
And they offered it like two- Go ahead.
Take it one step further, i- take it one step further. If that course was taught by a school without an approved instructor, are they, did they infer or say the students who sat through it didn't get credit for the course?
Um, I'm not sure. I can, I can check and see how they handled it.
Yeah. I'm trying to think of the what ifs, if we've been down this road and therefore we're on top of it, you know?
Yep.
And it shouldn't ever be punitive to the participants.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't mean to get you off kilter there, so thank you.
No, that's fine. I'm writing, I'm just writing it all down, so I remember to do it.
I guess I'm just curious right now to find out if Jerry's turning left or Jerry's turning right, so.
Left.
He's on the highway, going straight.
Heard the, I heard the signal.
You need me to go, i- is it too much background noise? I can go, I can put it on mute if you want.
No, 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 you're fine. We're just joking. So, uh, in line with that fair housing thing you just talked about, is there, uh, probably be too much, I mean, this course to me seems to be either a yes or no course, meaning everything we're talking about is either a yes or no item. It's a fact, you know, it's a factual thing. It's not something that's creating so much subjectivity. But what happens is, I, I find that after the class and then I get calls from peers, there seems to be uh, questions you get are, when it, there is subjectivity. Maybe I'm not talking correctly, but, uh, or expressing myself the right way I'm trying to say, but, um, you know, for instance, I, after, I got a call after I taught from somebody just saying, hey, you know, I'm about to retire my license. Can I still do these evaluations, you know? There seems to be some open end things, this, that, and the, and the other thing. And I, and I think, uh, I think the course might need to have a, you know, some sort of um, forum where maybe at the end, there's an email address or something that you can email a question to instead of to the instructor. Maybe they can email the commission right away or something like that to get an answer, or, or someone to get a response to a specific question, uh, that has to do with their own, their own practice. One, one of the things that I've, I've, I've come to accept in, in a, in a good class, whatever, whatever the topic is, is an appraiser, if I walk away feeling like I don't know anything, that there's more to know, or uh, maybe I'm not doing something right, I gotta do better at it, to me, that's a good class.
Uh huh.
So, I, and I know with it, but I think we also need to reassure, somehow put something in a slide that reassures the students, um, that if they're walking away from this, because that, that they're, they're, it's okay. I hope I'm trying to convey this rightly, because, you know, after we put all the stuff up of the supervisor thing, it seems to be that the only people who take on supervisors are the ones that absolutely have to. There's, there's a lot of people, I know I get, I get emails regularly of ki- of kids' resumes, and we save them in a file. We, we go through them and that's how I have the two provisionals I have. So I know other appraisers are getting them, but they're not taking on, and I think a lot of them are just scared because they think there's too much, uh, uh, regulation and rules required and they're, and they're not. So, and I think, so somehow I think we need to remove that fear a little bit in the course through the narration of the slides. Um, so that at the end, there's a little more confidence in being able, and wanting to take, wanting to be a supervisor. I hope I conveyed that correctly, but.
Yeah, I think you did fine.
John, I think you bring up a, a, a very good point, and I think what, as a suggestion here for other, everyone on this call, is maybe we start now, beginning in May, because April is next month and, and the agenda, we'll have a section in our monthly agenda of our regular meetings, any questions, you know? And therefore, we, we get that out there, and therefore, any questions that have come through, we as a commission and staff can have a good discussion here, and therefore, that question has been answered in a public forum. And therefore, you know, we can, you know, address it, because your example, if I retire and, but can I do evaluations? It's a damn good que- excuse, a darn good question, okay, you know? And therefore, with the aging of our population of the appraisal field, the average person now, I guess, is 62, a- and there, these are gonna be real questions as they, they come forward, you know, do they semi-retire or retire? What can they and can't they do? So, you, you just, I'm playing off, thinking of what you're saying here. Uh, do we then take that and not so much as an informal, but maybe i- it's right there, hey, this month, you know, Linda, what questions have, were there any questions? Or Terry Joe, what questions, or Ricky, you know, that we've gotta come before us? We do that informally now, but maybe, y- you know, we have that section within our agenda on a monthly basis. Just food for thought. Just playing off what you said, John.
Jerry, Jerry, to piggyback on that, you know, if there's frequently asked questions, maybe you can, you know, the, the commission or the staff could keep an updated FAQ sheet and have it posted to the, the website.
For the class, yeah.
To address the topic, you know, the, the, you know, the most, you know, prevalent questions, you know, when, when, when they come up, just update that sheet periodically, you know, I, I know maybe once after each commission meeting might be a lot, but maybe every quarter, do an updated FAQ sheet on the, on the website, or actually after, you know, a law class, um, that might be, and that could also be something that's included in the law module handout, is the frequently asked questions. It might help.
Is there anything, uh, Vicky, that would preclude us legally from doing that? Do, uh, you know, because there's always the legal side of things, so. That's where you, you know, your expertise keeps us in the fairway, that we're not going off in the tulie bushes.
Where are you golfing?
I'm, I'm not far from where the Masters is, okay?
Did we lose Vicky?
In the fog down here. I might have been.
Did we lose Vicky?
She's currently on hold. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Jerry, because I think, uh, and, and even if it has to get vetted through, uh, you know, up through the staff and Vicky, and even over to the Attorney General's office and take a turn and come back to the consumer, that's fine, because I think it's a way, one, it, it shows we're active, but two, uh, it gives, even if it gets vetted and it comes back something different, uh, it, it's still out there, and then maybe we can, then we can have the option of, you know, removing it or not, but I, I know that, 'cause periodically, uh, you know, the appraisal institute will post, uh, Scott will post, uh, or send out s- stuff that other commissions around the country are doing, and it sounds like some of them actually have some sort of forum where they could get out informational blasts, so, uh, which I'm never really a fan of, because then you're, you know, there's always somebody who says, I didn't get it, so I'd rather have them have the avenue, the, the communication be that they come to our site and get the answer there. So I think that's a great idea, actually. So I think that's a great idea, actually.
I think that would work very well.
And also for those who, we've all, you know, most of us who have either been through my classes or stood in front of classes, um, you think you're given the right answer when you're asked something off, off the, off the cuff. And then driving home, you start to really rethink about things, you know? And it's good to bounce it off everyone because someone may think of another angle. Like quite frankly, I wo- I wouldn't have thought of, you know, uh, you know? And here's, I, I, I don't mean to keep coming back, but John, you brought up, and Shawna brought it up a month ago here on this question. If, if you're retired, you know, can you do work, you know? Uh, are there income limits? Are there this? Are they that? And it's like, like it or not, we're kind of facing that in our, as I, as our demographics are what they are. And here's just another thing is you brought up the evaluation. It's here, we're trying to keep it in the fairway and we're here to try to support and, you know, protect the public. But it, it's an issue that, you know what, it's real, it's right here. And I'm just using it as an example when we're teaching here, if it's a Linda or you or Bruce and whomever, i- at least then we're, hey, this is, this is what we're hearing out in the, out in the, you know, out in the flock, so to speak here. Therefore, we're trying to address, you know, on a timely basis as quick as we can and get the right information out there. It goes back, I think, traditionally what Linda Seppso had said earlier here, that who the heck is teaching these things, you know, and giving these students the wrong information? And what, what we're trying to do is get it out, the right information to the public at the end of the day. So it's maybe just another avenue and I will shut you up. Sorry about that.
Oh, Jerry, we always like to hear your ideas.
Terry has her hand up.
Uh, excuse me commissioners, we have had to let Vicki go. Um, she has another meeting at ten. And so she's going to be off, um, as of this time.
Oh, we're already over our hour. Okay.
All right. So I just want to say real quickly that I, I think one, we should add, uh, add something about the retirement, y- yes. I think we should add something about the evaluation, yes. Have a section in the area to pop in the Pyria stuff when it, when we get to it, which I think we're going to get to before the, the, uh, over the next several months. And then the, the last thing, uh, two other things real quickly is, uh, the, this is a tough, tough subject, but the fair lending racial bias AQB report, that's all evolving and, and expanding a little bit more. Um, do you think in line that, that Linda, you earlier said that the Realtors had something with the fair housing lending law coming in, that maybe we should get some outside help in enhancing some of those slides? And just, uh, just so we can make sure we're up to date on that. And then the, the last thing I want to mention is, I always thought, we're talking about law. And, uh, and, and we're talking about the Connecticut law. I always thought it would be a good idea to have sections on there that maybe talk about a couple of current cases, case law. Um, that, uh, that appraisers get excited over case law. And we have a, in UsePAP, we have this jurisdictional exception. And believe it or not, that jurisdictional exception is something that's been evolving. And it has to do into what's normal appraisal practices in your market area. And we have several court cases in our state which have kind of molded into uh, how we actually appraise and handle situations, cer- certain, certain things on certain property types. Now, I, I know there's a lot out there, but I think it, it might be a way for, uh, the instructor to actually pull in a couple of cases to talk about that might be of interest to him that they, him or her, that they know a little bit more about or something. Just to, and bringing that at the end and that might stimulate, uh, you know, perk everybody up, et cetera. Um, and, and you'd bring it at the end. So there's a cap on time. And then of course, if everybody wants to hang on and keep talking about it, that's up to them. But.
Okay, um.
There's a lot.
I can, I can, I can reach out to Connecticut Fair Housing for some information on the fair housing to make sure we have all the right info.
I think.
And then, John, if you could put together just what needs to be seen, I mean, you don't have to do a fancy slide or anything. Just on the commercial evaluation stuff, cause you're the one who understands that the most. So if you could, you know, just give me what needs to, what is the important things that need to be on the slide?
So that would be section thirteen. You want me to talk, focus on section thirteen?
Yes, if you could. And then if you know any of those cases that we should look up on the jurisdiction exception? You know, Vicki can probably look them up, look them up, uh, we just need to know where to look.
Okay. So let's back up there. So you have the, in assessor's point of view, hopefully we can get Sean in to handle. And then before that, we have case studies, but it's not a section number.
The case studies were a part of the fair, uh, lending racial bias, and that was from the AQB report. Within the report, they had some particular cases. There was a case in California, a case in Indiana. I think that's I N, and there was a case in Connecticut. Those, um, the intent was to take those cases that were in the AQB report to put them in as part of the case study. So that's actually a part of section eleven.
Right. And we can change it to something else if there's a better case to use.
That's fine. Maybe we can get the help.
We can always move it to the end too.
If fair housing people to help us with that slide. But can we add in a, uh, a section? I know, cause we're going to be consolidating a lot of this and I think we're gonna have.
Finish your statement. Can we add in a section?
We add in a section, uh, thank you, add in a section, uh, on case studies? I, I, I'm not talking about case, uh, for fair housing and discrimination. I'm talking about case studies that have to do with valuation in the state of Connecticut.
Okay, so.
Yeah, have you, yeah, and you know one?
I know a ton of case. I mean, I have a whole, whole, I save these case, we just got a new case that was settled over in Danbury. That's quite fascinating with a new judge who ripped both appraisers apart.
Okay, that's a good thing.
Okay, so that's it. That's fine.
Yeah, so something like.
Add it as another section, just, just put in, um, case studies. I'm not, Terry Joe, are you on? Cause Terry Joe can probably add to it.
Jerry, what are you going to say? Because I know, I think I know.
Um, we used to talk about, you know, cases that we had addressed. And Linda Seppso, you may remember this, but we got told to stop that because we damn near got sued because of, um, privacy issues with the cases that we dealt with. Okay, so we had an instructor accidentally happen to say a name uh, on a case in all hell brooks. And were you, I don't know Linda, if we were still on here or not with the commissioner during that time. And we had to put a cabotz on, on that. Um, and that, now maybe things have changed. I'm not trying to be the wet blanket over anything here. Cause I think that gets stimulation, that's real life, that gets people's juices going and so forth. I, Vicki, we need a little guidance i- if.
Well, let me say this, in the case studies, in, in case studies, you don't have to put the actual case itself. You can put this scenario. This was a situation which was to say, a person, you know, didn't perform a drive-by but said that they did. Uh, you know, that was fraud or, you know, there was an ethical violation. And you don't have to put, you know, it was Sue Smith of, you know, Fairfield County. You don't have to put that because that way you don't open it up. It's just the, the factual scenario. And I think that's what was done with the case studies that were, um, provided previously.
Okay, way back, cause I remember, I turned, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, attorney O'Neal and Alisa Neos, they put us, you know, we had to shut it down. You know, what we did. So we took those out years.
And I, I can tell you, it's kind of interesting that you said that, because I did get a call from an, uh, an attorney. It is an attorney, but it also a person who teaches who had indicated that, um, somebody from the Real Estate Commission had, had a case that was being mentioned and the attorney who represented the, one of the parties said, uh, please take our name out because this case has not been resolved. It, you know, there was a ruling, but we are appealing it and until such time, there's been a final disposition. Um, it's not, you know, fair for, to disparage our company. You know, it was a company, you know, that was involved in, in, in the lawsuit. So I, I know, yes, we do have to be very careful in terms of that, but again, the, um, factual.
All right. So this is really good because I agree with everything that's said. Because for instance, there's a, uh, there's a self-storage case down in New London that, you know, it's got some great stuff in it, but I would avoid that case because both appraisers actually got slammed. So, y- you know, I, I don't think that's, because that could be embarrassing. And, and, and that could in fact, not just their, those are companies that are still in business that employ other people that rely on that, that income for to feed their family. So I agree with that. I, I think what I'm talking about is more or less explaining that, hey, we have this jurisdictional exception in UsePAP. What does that mean in reference to our state law? And then maybe we just focus on a couple of the cases that actually came before us. For instance, I talked about the wheel breaker case, um, that, that Roger Palmer brought to us, that we actually brought in Alan to distinguish, you know, when is something become evidence, when is not. Uh, and then, you know, we, we, uh, we had the gentleman who lost his license because he, uh, remember he got arrested for climbing in the windows, you know?
Yep.
That kind of stuff. Uh, we can just stick to, I think, a few things just to get people to understand that they need to be conscientious of, of, especially when they're doing litigation work.
Right. And we just, I mean, obviously we don't mention anyone by name.
Yeah, every time I take on a litigation assignment with a new attorney, I always ask them, are there any cases out there that involve this before? Because I want to know. I don't want to be caught on the stand, you know, somebody asking me a question about, you know, another case. Well, this was done here. Why didn't you do this? You know, et cetera. And, and, you know, nine times out of ten, it comes back and they say no, other than what I already know. But there's a handful of cases out there that are pretty common now and they're older cases that, uh, that we could use as an example. For instance, the Trow Bridge case is a big case that's used by a lot of assessors. Uh, it was a bridge abutment that was on one half, not on the other half. And the assessor, the, the case was because the assessor assessed it as a, it could be, the land had higher value because of this bridge when it didn't. Uh, there's another landlock case out there that's pretty common, uh, out there that's used about assessing landlock land, that kind of stuff. So I think there's a, there are some older cases out there that we could reference and not get into, uh, hurting anybody.
Well, if they've already been, if they've been disposed of or there's a disposition on them and it's already passed, you know, ten years. I mean, the appeal period is certainly over. There's, you know, there's no problem with it. It's just.
Yeah, yeah. And, but the idea is to, to convey that, hey, look, this, as appraisers, there's these, these laws, you know, become case law and they eventually can evolve into something else that we should be, be doing this. And I know that may be a UsePAP thing, but I think, I, I think, I think we can incorporate that into this law module because it is state law. Uh, i- it's a state, it's a course on state law.
Okay, not a problem. I, I will check to make sure, but I don't see any problems again.
Yep.
And, and we may have this discussion and find out, you know what? This is not a, the appropriate place for this. This needs to be.
Yep.
You know, something else. And that's fine. I, I just think we should go down that road and explore it.
It sounds like a good thing for a three-hour thing from the Connecticut chapter of the appraisal institute for a three-hour, you know, homegrown course.
I was going to volunteer, John, to do a chapter development program on case studies. You, you read my mind, Jerry.
I would, I wouldn't, you know, actually to tell you the truth, I wouldn't mind doing that in, in, as experience for helping write this. Because, uh, we did it before, Jackie, if you remember, but we bought, uh, it was Elliot Pollak and then they came in and they talked specifically. They were focused on cases that they were involved in. And that's.
Yeah, with, um, some attorneys down that way. I can't remember who it was, Jared, do you, um, but yeah. Yeah. But yeah, no, I, I definitely agree. And I, I, I think, you know, where Vicki said you could redact certain information and just have a, a scenario with, you know, not having property addresses and names, that sort of thing. That way there's no, you know, because I know that, um, I do recall a few instances where, you know, names got put out and there was issues. Um, so yeah.
All hell brooks. Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, exactly.
I mean, the Walgreens case that they put on, Elliot lost the case. Elliot Pollak was the attorney who lost the case, but he put it on. And, uh, which I thought was amazingly, you know, a humble gesture of him to get up there and educate us on how he handled the case.
We, we do really, you know, folks seem to really, you know, I, I found in all the years that I've been, you know, doing this, that, you know, everybody wants to be able to walk away with at least one piece of information that's going to make them a better appraiser, that's going to give them the knowledge to walk away feeling like they've gained something and that they'll be able to, you know, do their job better or more efficiently. Um, so I mean, that's really the goal of my mind when we put on education is to try to help people, you know, become knowledgeable and, and, you know, uh, do a better job for, for, you know, their clients and for the general public.
All right, that's enough for me. I'm going to work on those two, thirteen and sixteen.
Okay, that's fair. And it's now ten thirteen. And we have started a couple of minutes late, but I think we have dedicated at least a solid hour to this. Um, we will have a follow-up meeting or we can have a follow-up meeting after.
Yes.
We've had a chance to digest and, and get some things together and we will let you know when that can be.
Uh, real quickly, real quickly.
Can I ask? Go ahead, John. Go ahead.
Real quickly, is it, is there a way to get somebody from the state who's graphic oriented to help us with the slides itself, the graphic parts of it?
We have an intern, Colin, who is working on that and is going to help us with that part of it.
All right, great.
So that's why I said, if you give us the data you want to see in the slide, he can create it to look pretty.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Vicki, before we turn, we, we shut down this meeting, legally, are we allowed to discuss another quick item that was not on the agenda? Or must we wait till next week?
You have to, you can only discuss what you said this was going to be about.
Fair enough. Enough said. Enough said because Linda Seppso, the point that you brought up, uh, on that email, uh, a day or two ago, you sent over to myself and to Linda. Uh, I want to make sure, please don't let me forget for us to discuss that next week.
Okay.
Okay, therefore, you know, that, that's called, you know, a tease for everyone to make sure, what the heck is he talking about? Okay, but well, whatever legally we got to do, we follow the thing. Okay. Um, and, and can I just ask one last quick question here? Structurally, we only get these, uh, Zoom calls or this access for a finite amount of time. Are we in trouble that we ran over? And I apologize if we did.
No, not at all. With Microsoft Teams, this is from my PC itself. We don't share. So each person has their own account. So you never have to worry about that, um, in Microsoft Teams. In, in Zoom, at times, there might be another meeting scheduled right after and it might cut us off. So that's why I tend to do, um, our Zoom meetings for about two and a half hours. Just to, I schedule it for that, just to, or three hours, just to be sure, so that no one else comes in on our meeting time.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't mess up anyone here.
Not at all. We're all set. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank, thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the discussions. I, I appreciate it. Hopefully I didn't overstep my bounds or. You didn't, Jackie, and we'll have an assignment for you soon. I just have to think of what we're going to have you do.
I keep thinking you need more, um, you know, non-appraiser people on the board. You should, Jackie shows up every month. You might as well just put her on.
Yeah, absolutely. Be a, a public, a public member.
A public member, absolutely. And at least she knows the terminology and all about appraising. So it's not like we're teaching somebody.
Hmm, I haven't heard Jackie yet.
I think that went through. All right.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, take care.
Okay, thank you.